Item five, we have a work session, drainage subcommittee recommendations. Mr. Kabiri?
Yes, sir. As Jeff puts the presentation on the, there we go. Council may recall this past month, at the April meeting, there was a presentation given by members of the drainage subcommittee related to their activities over the last nine months. There was quite a bit of information conveyed to council over a period of about an hour and a half, and I put this item on the agenda tonight to give council a little bit more opportunity to go through the recommendations a little more thoroughly and offer any input or ask any questions you may have. There were a total of 11 recommendations found by the drainage subcommittee, ranging from things as simple as evaluation of future opportunities and issues that may exist, as well as concrete actions that the committee would like council to take in the immediate future. The first item, though somewhat, I don't want to call it benign because it's not benign, but boilerplate, is a simple resolution on the part of council determining that the findings of the drainage subcommittee were worthy of action for council to take, that we believe that flooding is a concern in Friendswood and that we do need to take steps moving forward to mitigate potential impacts to the city. So, in that vein, there's a resolution on the agenda later tonight for council to vote on that basically outlines those, that simple statement, that council believes that flooding is of issue, is of concern, and that the findings of the subcommittee warrant a call for action or cause for action. The second recommendation, related to a lot of work that the city did in conjunction with Rice University. You may recall, we discussed, the city hired Phil Bediant, Dr. Bediant, from Rice University to do a drainage model of the entire Clear Creek watershed within, and focus on the city of Friendswood particularly, so that we can get a better understanding of how rainfall throughout the watershed impacts our community. With the assistance of Rice, a number of projects were modeled and simulated. I will state, these were conceptual in nature, though they were fairly focused on specific areas or specific improvements to either the main stem of Clear Creek, or areas upstream of it in the form of detention ponds. These were intended to give us an idea of where the biggest bang for our buck would be realized. So, moving forward, if we were to approach a project, where would we get the best return on that investment? A number of the findings of that drainage study determined that terracing, helping improve the, not the width of Clear Creek, but the width of Clear Creek above the ordinary high watermark during major storm events would greatly enhance flood mitigation within the city of Friendswood. I will state that these were just conceptual again, so moving forward, we were going to have to do further engineering and scoping to get the full benefits of these improvements. As an example, these are assuming certain terrain modifications at various locations based upon LiDAR information, topographical information related to the land immediately adjacent to the creek. If we were to take a section of this project, let's say from 528 to Bay Area Boulevard, we're going to have to get an on-the-ground survey that truly identifies the full breadth of the topography adjacent to the creek and determine where, how much dirt's going to be removed from that section, and then we can fully plug in and get the full benefits of those projects. The other impact of this, or the other benefit from this report is that we can, and I'll discuss this later on during the workshop, is we can start collaborating with various other agencies, partners of us, whether it be Pearland upstream of us or League City downstream of us, and start identifying projects that we can tackle within our legal limits to help improve drainage throughout Friendswood. Our, our main concern, obviously, is Friendswood. We don't want to be bad neighbors to Pearland or League City, but at the end of the day, we want to make sure that we protect our citizens. The reason I keep highlighting the term conceptual up there is because these are not fully engineered projects. This is just a, a 30,000-foot level evaluation of the impact of drainage within Friendswood. The biggest thing that came out of this recommendation is that we need to be working and focused on projects that impact the main stem, Clear Creek itself, and not focusing as much on the other tributaries that are coming into the, into that main stem. Those other tributaries are managed fairly well with Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District and the Harris County Flood Control District. As a result of those projects identified, there were a number of recommendations that came out of the subcommittee that our citizens advisory team is currently evaluating. These pertain to projects directly on the creek that involve things such as de-snagging the banks of Clear Creek. You may recall, Galveston County Consolidated and the city of Friendswood have partnered to the tune of $3 million total, 1 million the city's share, clearing and de-snagging on the Galveston County side of the creek from 528 all the way to, sorry, from 2351 all the way to 528. Recently, Harris County Flood Control District is also doing a similar effort, though not as robust, but doing similar clearing and de-snagging from Dixie Farm south to FM 528 on the Harris County side of the creek. We talked about elevating bridges throughout various cross-sections of Clear Creek, from Dixie Farm to Bay Area Boulevard, and in the evaluation by Rice, we determined that the biggest bang for our buck, and when it comes to bridge elevations, were 2351. As each of these projects were identified, we put pen to paper based upon other experiences that agencies such as Harris County Flood Control District or the city of Friendswood saw directly in similar projects, and determined what the probable cost for these projects would be. Based on those findings, we looked at grant opportunities that were out there, either with the Texas Division of Emergency Management, whether the, it was with the General Land Office of the state of Texas, or whether it was with the feds themselves, cost-sharing opportunities that are out there to pursue these projects. At the end of the day, we had made a recommendation to council and to the citizens advisory team that we want to pursue $32 million roughly worth of drainage projects involving Clear Creek. That 32 million did not represent the entirety of the project. That 32 represented seed money that the city would need to put forward to find partnership opportunities with other agencies. Those partnership opportunities ranged anywhere from a 25% local match to 10% local match, or whatever those, whatever may be there. The recommendation was that we need to pursue this over the next 10 to 15 years. Realistically, it may be longer than 15 years, but we needed some money so that we can have some skin in the game when we're approaching other agencies to pursue this. And I apologize, I should have asked. Feel free to interrupt me at any point if you have any questions related to any of this stuff. This was probably one of the most nebulous components of the, the effort, simply because it's an estimation of what these costs of these projects would be, and it's an estimation as to what grant opportunities are there. Each storm event is followed by a slew of grant opportunities and fundings that come from the federal agencies based upon the most recent storm. So, what we saw following Allison varied drastically from what we saw following Harvey. We had, for instance, from a buyout proposal in Allison, we, we bought out 137 properties in a matter of six months when we started our application. We are now going on close to a year on another buyout application following Harvey with no end in sight. So, I, I can't promise that the, the next disaster, and there will always be a next disaster, what the strings attached or what the timelines look like for those events, but this was our best effort at determining what matching and partnership opportunities would be there if the city had money of its own to put forth in, in terms of drainage improvements. We estimate roughly $173 million worth of projects to, to greatly reduce flooding in Friendswood, but it won't fix everything. That was just our estimation.
Mo, do you believe that $32 million is enough? Because I've heard some other people thinking that that might not be enough for what Friendswood needs to raise.
Well, I would answer that in twofold. One, we can always use more money. The 32 million doesn't completely remove everybody from a Harvey flood, so from that perspective, yes, it would be great to get more money to tackle these projects. But the greater concern is there's a limitation to what we can do with these dollars. So, as it stands right now, we can't use tax-backed debt to pay for projects outside of our city limits. So, if we're looking to increase the 32 million to something larger than that for projects outside of Friendswood, I can't support that simply because I don't want to put the city in a legal bind moving forward. However, if you're talking about increasing that $32 million to do more projects in Friendswood, then by all means, we can find great opportunities for those dollars. We also have to weigh, though, the other demands that exist out in there in the city, whether it's with facilities and with transportation. A number of y'all are, you see firsthand the issues with congestion throughout our city in your daily commute, back and forth to work. And then there's also the impact to our taxpayers. So, there's only so much debt you can leverage without unduly burdening the, those citizens. So, I don't know if I directly answered your question, but... Yes, sir. And if we go, we're eight years down the road, and we see that we've already spent the 31 million, but we've made great progress, we can always go back to the citizens and forth another bond election.
Maybe you could comment on how that number could, could show up in, in the, in a, on a ballot, let's say. You could kind of look forward a little bit down the road and...
Sure.
Talk about how that number could show up. Let's say, we got the recommendation back to put this on the ballot in November, and we have this number going in that we, you know, we think is a pretty good number, but, you know, past history, we, we ran out of money to finish Black Hawk, you know, which was another bond election that we estimated the cost for, and by the time we finished the project, concrete and all those other things have gone up in price. Anyway...
Sure.
Maybe you could just say a couple of sentences about how that number actually ends up, you know, in ballot language.
Sure. Well, the ballot language, and it hasn't been written yet, but it would be fairly broad in that it would say $32 million worth of projects along the Clear Creek drainage system within the city of Friendswood to tackle flood mitigation projects. The projects themselves will not be enumerated on the ballot. It's not going to say terracing from Dixie Farm to another location. It's going to say for flood mitigation efforts. Simply put, as those grant opportunities present themselves in future years, you don't want to hamstring the city to where we cannot pursue a project that's not quite meeting the definition of what the feds may have established. If, for instance, for instance, the feds say, you know what, we'll widen Clear Creek, but we limited it to just simply terracing on the ballot, then we would not be able to spend a penny of those dollars on widening the creek. So, you want to have some level of flexibility in that process. That being said, from when the ordinance is passed to held a bond election in November, and when the election actually takes place, there's going to be a number of educational materials produced that are going to further enumerate what those projects would entail. So, we're going to try to, from staff's perspective and ultimately council's authorization, stick to as closely as possible to those educational materials, because that's what we're telling the citizens that these funding, these funds are going to be used on. So, there's going to be some flexibility in the, the bond language. The other aspect of this is, we don't know exactly when the funding opportunities or when the partnerships are going to be, present themselves. So, the 32 million, I can tell you right now, won't fund everything. So, if we start seeing the feds wanting a greater percentage of local dollars put towards efforts, then 32 million won't be enough. But if we see a trend in which the feds are willing to take up a lion's share of these, these projects, then 32 may be just fine. The intent is to issue the debt as these, these projects and these partnership opportunities come up. So, we're seeking the authorization now, but if it takes a year or seven to where the feds say, you know what, we have a terracing opportunity in which we'll cover 75%, that's when the debt will actually be issued, so it won't impact our taxpayers until it's actually issued.
We would be asking for permission to borrow $32 million for flooding projects, but we're not going to borrow it all on the first day.
Correct.
We're going to borrow it as we need it to put towards projects.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Another thing to keep in mind, too, is that they come in, you know, we, maybe we thought something was going to be a 10% requirement, it comes in at 30. We do have the ability to go to the county or to go to the state and ask them to chip in also. So, it, the, the full, full load of having to be the sponsor on this thing can be shared with other entities as well.
And to, yes, ma'am?
So, I have a question about the estimated cost of projects. Are those in order of best benefit?
They're...
Any kind of order at all?
They're not in order. They were in order in which Rice evaluated their effectiveness, but they're not in, in biggest benefit or no priority order. The reality is that de-snagging is underway now, especially on the Galveston County side, so a lot, large part of that's going to be tackled here fairly shortly. The biggest benefit of all the projects listed on the screen there is the terracing that we saw in Friendswood.
One thing I wanted to comment about the project list and these numbers you see up there is that this was the, the, the outcome of the sub-team as a group. We, we worked as well as we could on consensus, but no one on the team got everything they wanted. You know, what we did is, we spent a lot of time on this, and Carl can echo at this, of trying to figure out what is the right package, what is, what is the dollar numbers that are effective, and this was a team decision to, to come out with this.
You've heard it here earlier during the communications from the public, mention of hiring an additional staff person to, to head up drainage concerns and to be that constancy of purpose, to be that individual to carry that football across the goal line for us. Historically, we've operated with only one professional engineer on staff, and as of right now, I'm technically the city engineer as well. But we've seen, outside of Harvey, we have enough demand, daily demand, from an engineering perspective, to have two professional engineers for the city of Friendswood. We're considerably behind the eight ball when you compare us to other agencies, and then when you look at the workload and the projects that we have going on, we definitely have the need for another full-time professional engineer, too, in addition to myself. My intent is not to be doing daily engineering activities. But when you take into consideration Harvey and the need to oversee the, the improvements that we're, that we're recommending, whether the bond approves or is passed or not, we need somebody dedicated to overseeing the drainage needs of this community. They will be doing other engineering activity associated with their daily demand for the city, but we definitely need somebody that their, the predominant makeup of their job is to, to see the, the drainage needs of this community met.
And, and there, and it's a legitimate question to ask, is do you bring this person on before or after you pass your bond? But the reality is that whether the bond passes or not, we have to up our game in terms of dealing with Clear Creek, and we have to put the resources in to do it. So, so, the bond passes, that, that provides the project money, but even if it doesn't, we still need, we still need to do this. This is something that we, we had a deficit add in terms of our own city managing this, and I think we need to, we need to fund this position.
Another recommendation you're going to see later tonight is discussion about upping the city's drainage criteria as it comes to new development within the city of Friendswood. If you look back over the history of Friendswood or the history of coastal regions, following any tragedy, there's usually a push to increase the drainage criteria or to develop some criteria. Prior to the mid-'90s, the city had absolutely no drainage criteria when it came to mitigation. You basically had to store within a two-year event within the roadside ditch or the storm sewer system of a project, and there was no detention requirements. In the mid-'90s, the city, along with other agencies in the region, adopted drainage standards for the 100-year event, and required detention requirements bolster the 100-year event. Since Harvey, the city has adopted the latest and greatest flood insurance rate maps for the city of Friendswood, both Harris and Galveston Counties, that raised the bar when it came to development criteria for properties that are currently in the flood plain. In addition to that, the NOAA established new rainfall intensity curves for our region. So, previously, where 14 inches of rain over a 24-hour period constituted a 100-year event or a 1% storm, which is our current drainage criteria. The new 100-year event is very, it's gone up to 17 inches over the same 24-hour period. So, the intensity of rainfall has increased. In some respects, some of the data shows that the, the new 100-year is the old 500-year. So, a recommendation, if council's in support, my recommendation would be taking, directing me to go back and evaluate the merits of increasing our rainfall intensity curves to reflect Atlas 14 NOAA's study, and beefing up our detention requirements when it comes to new developments. So, we can't undo what was done in the past. Our, our efforts to fix those issues are to tackle projects along Clear Creek, but we can try to stem any impacts of new growth within the watershed by increasing the detention and drainage criteria. Recommendation six was fairly related, was related in large part to the earlier recommendation about tackling projects along Clear Creek. If we're going to do any terracing, or we're going to do any shelving projects along the creek, we're going to need the property to, to achieve that. If you were to look at Clear Creek throughout Friendswood, from Dixie Farm all the way to Bay Area Boulevard, there are a number of properties either the city has in, is its, in its possession through Tropical Storm Allison and buyout. Either we have it through easement through the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District, or we have it through fee and title through the Galveston County Consolidated or Harris County Flood Control District. We've identified there's a number of properties that still need to be acquired. So, when you talk terracing, the initial recommendation out of the Rice study was that we have a 200-foot terrace above the ordinary high watermark on both sides of the creek. When we apply that terracing to what properties we do own and where development currently is, we're going to try to move that terrace from one side to the other to minimize the impact of having to take out structures, take out homes, because we want this to be as least impactful as possible. But this is not going to be a one-and-done, like this year, I need $30 million to go purchase the remaining part of the creek. The intent is to pursue buyouts through annual programs that exist in areas where there are no homes, there are no structures, and working with those property owners to get the large part of the terrace located on their property to remove any impacts to other properties. As an example, Mardian works with the church for the Woodcombe property to avoid wiping out sections of Polly Ranch to, since there's undeveloped land just on the other side of the creek, to take property that's already within the floodway to pursue the large part of that 400-foot terracing, 200 feet on the other side, move the lion's share of the 400 feet to the Harris County side so that we avoid impacts of property acquisition. Recommendation seven has to do with the flow of water within Clear Creek. Both this recommendation and the later one talk about impacts of improvements and our impacts to the Clear Creek based upon changes in the watershed upstream of us. Historically, Friendswood hasn't been a leader in this regard. We've been involved, much like every other agency was involved when it comes to drainage within this watershed, but everybody was looking solely at the 100-year event and their area of responsibility. In order to get the funds necessary to pursue these projects, we need to become more of a, take a more leadership role in organizing consistency and partnerships with other agencies, both upstream and downstream of us. Having that additional engineer on staff will help greatly in this regard to be able to tackle their daily duties into going and meeting consistently with these other agencies and moving that ball forward. We just recently received the final report from Rice University. Now that we have it in place and assuming council gives me the green light, we're going to take that study on the road and start meeting with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. We promised them in advance that we'd share the, the findings of this report with them. The Harris County Flood Control District's chomping at the bit to see this report and see the findings, as well as having area meagre meetings with Pearland and League City and the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District, so on and so forth. We've already had initial meetings with those other agencies, but now that the report's final, we want to take the findings of the report and share it with them to see if there, if areas that we can't, for instance, you want to say terracing outside of our city limits, well, that's a project that League City definitely can tackle with their dollars. Maybe we can save them some heartburn and some, some study dollars by showing them the results of our study, and they can use that as a starting point to move that and down that, down that road. Number eight, recommendation eight involves a variety of proposals that have been, have been made both at the county and state level. There is not a single authority over the Clear Creek watershed. There are over 26 agencies, either local cities, utility, utility districts, drainage districts, so on and so forth, that have some skin in the game when it comes to Clear Creek and its impact to the, the drainage within this watershed. There have been proposals to create additional layers of government and additional layers of taxes to have an authority to oversee development within this watershed and to be the regulatory agency. Nothing that's necessarily gotten a whole lot of traction, but what this recommendation was to evaluate those recommendations that they come up, or those proposals that they come up, and see which ones would be of a good fit or benefit to the city of Friendswood. I would encourage working with the agencies that we currently have. We have a steering committee that's got everybody that's got any stakehold in Clear Creek, just stepping up our game there. If it's an issue of funding, maybe have, talking with the other agencies about increasing the dues so that that particular committee has a little bit more autonomy in tackling partnerships and tackling projects and in tackling studies to move the ball forward and, and the development also of a, maybe a master plan for the watershed. Recommendation nine, I had mentioned it earlier in this presentation about not looking backwards. We don't achieve anything by going back and trying to get redress Pearland or redress League City or anybody else, or redress Friendswood for that matter. Everybody did what the, they all followed their own rules. They all designed the 100-year event since the mid-'90s. The impacts of growth within the watershed is just a fact of nature at this point. The creek in Clear, the creek in Pearland was straightened long before any of these cities ever existed as we know them today, and so going back and looking at the past doesn't achieve anything. So, it's the recommendation of the subcommittee as, as well as myself to not go back and try to redress any other agencies. Item 10, I will say that we've done quite a bit of work on, we being the city of Friendswood and the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District. There have been a number of projects that have been tackled since Tropical Storm Allison in 2001 that have greatly enhanced drainage capabilities throughout the city, as an example...
Can you talk about some of those?
Sure.
Because I was concerned about Annalea and some of those places that I know that have flooded multiple times that were included in this.
In 2005, following the 2003 bond election, the city pursued drainage improvements within the Annalea subdivision in Sun Meadow and Glen Shannon. All those neighborhoods, there were still two or three houses in Sun Meadow that flooded, less than, I want to say less than, less than probably 15 total in Annalea, Kings Park, White Hall, whereas prior storms in Claudette and in Allison, a couple hundred flooded. And Glen Shannon, no properties flooded during Harvey. So, these local drainage and projects that were tackled since Tropical Storm Allison greatly improved the drainage capabilities for those subdivisions. In addition to that, the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District did upstream detention improvements along all those tributaries that run through these subdivisions. This recommendation is intended to further that those efforts where opportunities exist, but not necessarily to go forward with the bond election to tackle improvements within those local areas, so.
What about Autumn Creek and Forest Bend, are they all because of the creek, the flooding of the creek?
So, their proximity to Clear Creek is going to take improvements with, on Clear Creek to tackle those efforts. So, with respect to those two, we have pursued, for instance, back in February this year, we submitted an application to the General Land Office to do a drainage project in the Forest Bend subdivision, Park. So, we're going to continue to those small projects, but those are on the stem of, the actual main stem of Clear Creek to help reduce flooding within those neighborhoods. For Wedgewood Village, for instance, we're doing a project with the Galveston County Consolidated in which we're donating the land, the drainage district's doing shelving and detention efforts in the old Imperial Estate subdivisions, which is just directly across the street from Wedgew, just directly across the creek from Wedgewood, so that improvement there will greatly benefit Wedgewood. So, we're still tackling these, but we're not recommending that the 32 million be geared toward these local efforts particularly. And finally, the, the last recommendation was to increase our monitoring along various points within the watershed, not just Clear Creek. This will help better inform decisions during emergency management activities as to where the creek is at what times so that we have better awareness. It also helps in evaluating future studies if we have better data, more thorough data that we can properly evaluate the impacts of drainages that pertains to Friendswood. And that's it. If y'all have any questions, I can go back and speak them.
So, we'd love, if it's one of these recommendations, to have a price tag next to it. Thank you, Sally. Thank you. Thank you.
So, I can go back.
But on this last one, are flow sensors expensive? Are video monitoring to put along the creek, is that something that we could just do through a budget? Is that included in that 32 million? Or, I know there's a lot of overlap, especially with the new position.
Sure.
The new position would take care of several of these things or be involved, but for instance, that one and number 10, you know, there are things that the city's already doing with number 10 and the drainage district. What about this one?
So, the 32 million is only the, the bond projects identified for terracing, bridge elevations, and buyouts.
That other list.
That other list. So, the other projects that are mentioned, or the other recommendations are not part... So the other projects that are mentioned, or the other recommendations are not part of the 32 million. The, and I'll work backwards. The increased monitoring services, you can spend as little or as much as you want. My intent is to work with Harris County Flood Control District that currently maintains the online database for all these systems and help fund additional monitors at various points that we see fit. We can probably get less, we can tackle that for less than $30,000 total, if not...
Can I add one thing, too? Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District also has this on their list, so they would be participating in those costs as well.
The, the other items related to, to the recommendations and improving the localized drainage issues, these will be tackled with partnership opportunities with the general land office, with our own operating budget within the public works department. So we're not talking, and it's going to vary from project to project. For instance, there's a section in Analia at the end of Virginia in which we still had two properties flood. And since Hurricane Harvey, the city has gone in and put a new storm sewer line, as well as an inlet above the storm sewer line tying into the diversion channel that cuts across the first Friendswood United Methodist Church property. Granted, I don't want Harvey to happen again, but I would think if that improvement had have been in place, it would have significantly helped those two houses, because the two houses that flooded at the end of Virginia didn't have that much water in them. So I'm not talking about additional budgetary funds or bond dollars to tackle the localized drainage projects, but those would be tackled on an as-needed basis based on, with either our operating budget as we currently have it or with partnerships with grants that present themselves. The only other recommendation involved in this list that has any dollars attached to it is the drainage coordinator discussion. And as I mentioned earlier, there are other engineering needs in addition to drainage. When we talk about a, and you'll see this in your backup material later tonight, $200,000, that's a salary, benefits, plus dollars to pursue additional study efforts to keep the drainage model we have with Rice alive and moving forward, as well as other contract services that this individual, he or she, is going to need to hire engineers to do some design work or some preliminary engineering assessments, both for drainage and other engineering-related matters. So, long story short, of all these projects, if you take out the 32 million or all these recommendations, you're looking at probably about $200,000 to $225,000 worth of ongoing expended, $200,000 worth of ongoing expenses moving forward on an annual basis.
That, that's including employing this person with the city?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question there, Mike?
Of course.
Are we still expending dollars with Dr. Bediant?
So I have spent our budget on that. There's a budget amendment later tonight to finalize the remaining simulation requests that were made following the drainage subcommittee. As it stands now, I don't have any further funds to do any further studies unless council were to authorize additional funds.
So I think, I think we should, and however we put this on the agenda, do this. I think we should start monitoring that and, and basically not expending any more funds with Dr. Bediant until, until we have our drainage coordinator in place, and then we give them a budget and let them manage it. I think, you know, it's, it was a terrific bargain, we did it, but I think we need to just not keep doing small, keep things and wait for the drainage coordinator. So I don't know how to do that. Maybe it's just as guidance to you or whatever, and I want to see if anyone else has any other issues with that. Yeah, I think we should just lock down on that for now.
Have we already gotten a report from him?
We have, and I, we have put it on the citizens advisory team's website, friendswood.com/cat, and I'll email that out to council following this meeting. I will say not to toot our own horns, but you may have seen in the daily news, Lake City recently partnered with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to do a similar study of Clear Creek to the tune of $500,000. Our study, though done predominantly by graduate students with the oversight of Dr. Bediant, was done for 30, at the end of the day, $35,000.
I just want to thank you for walking back through this again. I know we've seen this a number of times, but I appreciate, every time there's additional clarity, and I want to thank you for that. I also would like to recognize Melissa is here from the GLO office, and appreciate her being here. She was on that subcommittee you were talking about, and she's been involved at HGAC meetings, our council meetings. So I felt the GLO's office through Melissa, Melissa Washington, excuse me, I didn't say her last name, sorry, has really demonstrated that they're here, they're involved, they care, and I'm very excited about that. And I think we are closer now than we've ever been, and I did live through the flood of '79, so I'm showing my age now. I think we're closer now than we've ever been. And in that same article you were talking about, or somebody was, 57 years we've been working on these issues in our area, 57 years. And the Army Corps of Engineers has been involved in all of those 57 years. So I'm excited, and hats off to that subcommittee and to the city of Friendswood, and I appreciate the hard work, and I am in support of these recommendations that you're putting forward today.
Thank you.
We knew back in June that we needed to do something when we chartered this subcommittee. So I'm getting a little chuckle that recommendation number one is do something.
Just want to get it on the record.
Good job. Yeah, you did.
But incidentally, in terms of Dr. Bediant, and he had asked us once if we thought, we have to give him the okay for this, but would we okay him to publish what he did for us? We should definitely have him publish it, because then we get, then we can basically point to something in the literature for all this work.
Oh, definitely.
So we've told him we'd be supportive of that.
Definitely, definitely. All right.